Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one on the council is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agendas for the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January the 15th, 2019; B) the minutes of the special meeting of January the 22nd, 2019; C) payment of material claims in the amount of $1,347,001.31; D) accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL-00009180907 for the construction of 3.5, sorry, 3.548 linear feet of 8-inch and 339 feet of 12-inch PVC waterline and all appurtenances to serve Yukon crossings Phase II Residential Canadian County, Oklahoma. Item E: accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL-00009180908 for the construction of 4,223 linear feet of 8-inch PVC sanitary sewer line and all appurtenances to serve the Yukon crossings Phase II Residential of Canadian County, Oklahoma. Item F: accepting the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number SL-00009180962 for the construction of 1,527 linear feet of 8-inch PVC sanitary sewer line and all other appurtenances to serve the Frisco Ridge Phase III Canadian County, Oklahoma. G: accepting Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit Number WL-00009181038 for the construction of approximately 370 linear feet of 6-inch and 2,000 linear feet of 8-inch and 12 linear feet of 12-inch waterlines and appurtenances to serve the City of Yukon Frisco Ridge Edition Phase III Waterline Extension Project, Canadian County, Oklahoma. And H: setting the date for the next regular council meeting for February the 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item two is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, do we have anything this evening?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item three: consider approving ordinance 1380 and ordinance amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon by providing that the zoning designation for being part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the northwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Restricted Commercial District, Frisco Commercial Tract 1, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Which one is this now such?
Yeah, she would like to talk on this item.
All right, on this item here. So this is now open for discussion. I have Ms. Linda Chudzinski. How, pronounce that for me again, please.
Chudzinski.
Chudzinski. Okay.
That's all right. I had to learn to say it, too.
Well, McCarron's not much more fun, so I...
I'm here to discuss some of the concerns of Frisco Ridge HOA meeting last Tuesday.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you state your address for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. 1821 Hobo, Yukon.
Thank you.
The number one concern of the Frisco Ridge neighborhood is the safety of our children. And this proposed C3 commercial area sits directly across from our children's playground and soccer field. I'm the former chair of the committee that was charged with building the playground for Frisco Ridge. And from the outset, we were primarily concerned with child safety. Our goal was to limit traffic dangers and to limit the potential to attract child predators. The site for the playground was selected based on the assurances from the developers that Frisco Ridge would remain residential. They said that commercial property would be placed along Frisco Road behind a tree line that runs along the west side of our property, the west side of the addition. And that was fine with us. We had no problem with that. But this current request for rezoning is not fine with us. We're extremely concerned about it. Rezoning this area of 3C places our neighborhood, and especially our children, at risk by increasing traffic and stranger danger. Last week, the planning commission said that a fence would be required of businesses within the C3 area, but that doesn't alleviate our concerns. Several hundred feet into our entrance, into the entrance of our addition and across from the children's play area is a cutout that could potentially be used to, as an entrance to this C3 area. And that potential increases our concern tenfold. Our children often walk or bike to that very area to play. The traffic would be ridiculous there. So, as your constituents, we are coming to you tonight for help because we need your help. Our community opposes this rezoning effort because it compromises the safety of our neighborhood and the safety especially of our children. No doubt, you're all mothers and fathers. So, from that viewpoint, we are asking you to please reject this request to put a 3C commercial zone inside the boundaries of our Frisco Ridge neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who was to speak on this issue? And I'll say now, we've got several things here this evening. We do have, when you come up and your speech was just... We have a three-minute time that we specify for that. So, and I appreciate you being very direct and to the point. So, with that, is there any other discussion from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Do you have to sign up in order to speak?
No, you may come up now. You need to come up, give your name, address, and you need to be limited to three minutes.
My name is Lori Philo Cook, 605 Branch Line Road. We live, have lived in Yukon for over 25 years, and we recently built a home in Frisco Ridge. And we're quite discouraged to learn that the front of our subdivision was going to become a commercial area. I did send an email to each of you today outlining on the map where you can clearly see and that the proposed business area would be right across from the soccer field and the playground. And we know we can't limit progress, and we're pleased that Yukon wants to have more development. But we just think this is the wrong place for it. But if you all are going to continue with this and approve this, I would personally like to ask that a couple of concessions be made of the developers. One is that the entrance to this business area not be on Frisco Ridge Road, which goes directly into our subdivision. So that would be the first thing. And the second is, as you can see from the map that I sent you on your email, having some kind of a green belt along our street to protect that area, not only a fence, but a green belt so that that can't be seen as you go into the subdivision and will kind of block it all, not only visibly, visually, but also with hardware, fence, green belt, that kind of thing, to maintain our subdivision. Many of us have moved there for a rural environment, wildlife, children playing. It's a nice subdivision to be in. We're really glad. But that's a major investment for us, and we're very disappointed about the decision to change that one little area to commercial. And we hope that if you do decide to approve that, that you will do it with some concessions with the developer to protect the entrance of our subdivision and the children that play in the soccer field and that park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to respond? Who's here for the developer tonight? You want to, you want to respond to those comments?
Kip Ryan with the developer. I think that as we go through the process of site plan, PUD, and so forth and so on, I think that we will address those issues at that appropriate time. I don't know that there's any concessions we're prepared to make tonight. We've always made ourselves available to the residents and have not heard from Frisco Ridge to, about this particular issue. We did go down from C5 to C3 because of the information and feedback we got from the last meetings.
That's correct, yeah.
So, I don't know really how to respond as far as any...
Okay, but you certainly would be open to changing...
Discussing options whenever we go to the process, yes.
Because there is no final plat on any of that property and none of the, you have no idea what the business is going to be.
And as you guys know, when things like this happen, traffic studies are done, things are done to kind of show what is appropriate, and we will follow all those steps required by the City of Yukon.
Right. Thank you, sir.
I'd like, would Mitch, would you come up and explain on the final plat, like what the city authority we would have and decisions that we could make?
During the final plating process, we can talk to the developer and discuss some of the things that's being discussed. Also, one of the things that we're looking at in the future is possibly extend the TIF area into this area. And during that process, we'll actually have a little more control. So, the final plat process is probably a good place. And then talk about and discuss a PUD, which that way we could put those requirements in something that actually means something.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And that would define the, we could look at separate entrances off of 66 and that's...
We could look at ingress and egress, fencing, screening, and so forth as part of the PUD process and final plating process.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item 3A: consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1380. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
And just a short comment, that's really where all of those changes are going to come into play in the future when all of that's determined as to what is going to happen and what we're going to be able to do. And a lot of things can be done as a part of the PUD process. When it goes back, it will go back when they're going to look at the property for future, all of the things that are going to go in there for. And you will have certainly more than ample opportunity at that time. Hopefully, you'll come back and always make your concerns known. Thank you very much. Item four: consider approving ordinance 1381 and ordinance amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in the Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from R2 Combined Residential District, R3 Multi-Family Residential District, and C3 Restricted Commercial District to C3 Restricted Commercial District. And this is Frisco Commercial Tract 3 and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion to approve. And a second, is there any further discussion? Any discussion from the dais? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 4A: consider approving the emergency clause of the ordinance of 1381. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item five: consider approving ordinance 1382 and ordinance amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from R2 Combined Residential, R3 Multi-Family Residential District, C3 Restricted Commercial District, I1 Light Industrial District, to C5 Automotive Commercial Recreation District, Frisco Commercial Tract 3, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion and second, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Item 5A: consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1382. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item six: consider approving ordinance 1383 and ordinance amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the northwest quarter of Section 30, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from A Agricultural to C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District south of I-40, and that's east of Frisco Road, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 6A: consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1383. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item seven: consider approving ordinance 1384, an ordinance which provides an amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Chapter 74-9 to allow nonprofit organizations to offer bingo events as fundraisers to the citizens of Yukon, requiring a permit at a cost of $10 and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance 1384. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item eight: consider entering into a inter-local cooperative agreement with the City of Oklahoma City to improve Frisco Road by constructing an interchange at Frisco Ridge and I-40 by sharing project costs along with the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out this item has been previously approved by the council. It comes back for your consideration this evening because there's been some changes in the original agreement where Oklahoma City has agreed to do the right-of-way cost for the acquisition of right-of-way on the west side, which is in their property. And this also points out that they will be paying $1.1 million towards the construction of the I-40 interchange.
So it definitely was to our benefit to do this.
It's definitely to our benefit to do this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there, are there any other comments or questions? Okay. Vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Consider approving an extension, I'm sorry, item nine, consider approving an extension of the 2017 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage, Water, and Sewer Project Contract for one additional year with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC at the original bid item price as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item comes before you this evening for your consideration. This item is bid every three years by the city, and we have an option to approve every year. But the maximum we can extend a contract is for three years.
Three years, yeah.
And this is on the original budget unit price. And we're recommending that it continues on. This will come back for you in about six to eight months, and we'll be bidding this again. And it's open to anyone with a company that would like to come in and, of course, bid on it. At that time, it's open bidding. And we do advertise throughout the state of Oklahoma for bidders.
So we will be conducting another bid period next year?
Yes, definitely.
In August?
Yes.
That's...
We'll be bidding it this fall so we can have it approved, so it'd be ready to start next December.
August of 2019, and then that would begin in 2020.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? I just make a side note, I've seen several pieces of work they've done for us, and I've been very pleased with their progress on a number of special projects, both large and small, and they've done extremely well. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 10: consider authorizing Triad Design Group to provide architectural and design services for Kimball Park Pool Bath House in the amount not to exceed $24,000 as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion. And any discussion?
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item comes before you this evening for your consideration in that we're trying to get our bath house and what have you up to code to make sure that whether we have to reconstruct a new one or do something, we have to get it up to ADA standards and items that presently does not meet.
This is just the Kimball Pool?
This is just, this is just the Kimball Pool Bath House at this time.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? What do we, what do we anticipate that this is going to entail? I guess in, on...
Well, it may entail tearing the bath house down and building a new one to make it sure that we can get the proper stalls and things in there that would meet ADA standard and do that. The reason we're looking at it now is that we, if we get something done, we'll have to bid it in this summer. So if we do any work on it, if the council considers this and wants to do it, we need to be tearing it down if we have to in August so we can have it rebuilt and in shape to open the pool next spring. Because we have a limited time in which to do work on pools and what have you. We have about nine months that we can do this type of construction.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty definitive, tearing it down. We're just going to move the whole thing. Okay. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 11: new business. Is there any new business?
None to deny, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Move into item 12, which is council discussion, and I'm going to reverse the order tonight and begin with Ms. Selby.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for coming out. And also, I want to thank the Park and Recreation for a wonderful chocolate festival. It was packed and filled with wonderful and delicious chocolate. Also, thank you to Dr. Deason and our fellow dentists. I'm a former educator, I know how important that is. Make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another.
Mr. Kachini?
I want to thank the city for passing that bingo thing. We've had a lot of the ladies knocking on my door making sure I voted yes on that. So Ward 1 was well represented at my place, so thank you all for that. And if you've not eaten at DRC at lunchtime, please, for you seniors, come on out. They've got some great food. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystrela?
Thank you all for meeting, being here this evening. And it was a wonderful time. The chocolate festival, yeah. Good time. And I guess that's all. Thank you for coming.
Is Yanda?
Well, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Deason and all the dentists who participated in assisting with the dental health of our children here in Yukon. And also, congratulations to Mitch and Jamie, and thank you for being here.
Just for myself, I want to congratulate Mitch. Like I said, he's been a fixture here for a long time and certainly have enjoyed him. He just retired, and certainly I felt really good about giving him his 25-year certificate, even though he wasn't in uniform like usual. And certainly to Jamie as well for their service here. I just, last night, they ran a short story on Channel 9. And I, it doesn't take me very long if you listen to what went on with our dentists coming up here and talking about programs for our children and all of the other things that we do. Yukon truly is a great place to live. Channel 9 last night ran a short blurb that I listened to, and I thought, gee, that's really pretty neat. Some Good Samaritan here locally went down to the... Uh, some Good Samaritan here locally went down to the utility department, walked in and said, guess what? For all of those federal employees out here that were adversely affected by the shutdown, he covered their utility bills. Now, if that's not a sign of a wonderful community, I don't know what is. Uh, so truly, as I indicated, uh, Yukon is a great place to live. Saturday, March the second, we have our sixteenth annual trout, uh, fish out, uh, that will be planned on, uh, once again, Saturday, March the second. Uh, there's no cost, uh, bring your own fishing pole and bait. Uh, they've got some concessions that will be available there, and, uh, all adults must be accompanied by a child. We know, the local fishermen already know where the good fishing is. Thursday, March the twenty-eighth, uh, twentieth annual Taste of Yukon. Uh, certainly, our chocolate festival was a tremendous success, and usually the Taste of Yukon is as well. Uh, it will be once again, March the twenty-eighth, our twentieth annual from five thirty, seven thirty at the Dale Robertson Center, and the tickets are fifteen dollars in advance. And with that, seeing no other business before the council this evening, this meeting is adjourned.